This warrant, this meeting benefit from membership of this community, this city, whose submission to this effect would not only benefit the purpose of our sitting here, but will enrich the conditions to which this meeting is convened. Therefore, if you abide by this suspension of the rules, it will warrant the dignitaries gathered here to also submit in tributes to our late father, late friend. And that would be enriching for this very special sitting. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Morris, can you please read for us the rule?
Rule 11 says, "Suspension of the rule. Any provisions of this rule relating to the proceedings of business at a meeting of council or its committee may be suspended by resolutions of not less than half of the membership present." That is one. Two says, "Suspension of any of the provisions of these rules shall limit in its operations to the particular purpose and time for which the suspension has been warranted." Three, say, "Motion contemplated in sub-rule one may be removed without notice being given." Four, it says, "This rule shall not apply in respect to rule two, six, and seven, and eleven." Then, five says, "This rule shall not apply to provisions contained in any other legislations." Madam Speaker, the rule we are talking about in this case is the general ruling limiting those who are supposed and those who are not supposed to deliberate on the flow of council, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
Honorable Chair Susan?
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, your table remains honored. I am up to second the motion moved by honorable Morris Odom that the general rule be suspended in order to allow the dignitaries, the friends, and other honorable members. Here we are, we have other honorable members from the division. Those who really want to say something about our dear, dear friends and colleagues, Dr. Cipri, thank you so much.
Why do you sit? Will allow me to move the passcode in front?
Honorable members, rule 11 has been granted, suspended, to allow dignitaries who have something to say in this honorable council, give him also their respect for our fallen brother. Before we move the passcode in front, allow me get a motion from the leader of government business, Honorable Olukweske.
Madam Speaker, I rise in respect to your table and through you and for the benefit of the mourners assembled here today. My name is Anejo Chriske Olukweske Olukweske, the female workers' councillor, leader of government business, and deputy mayor of this council. Madam Speaker, I stand on this day of 8th November 2024, here in Gulu City Council Hall. In accordance to Rule 19 of the standard rules of procedure, to move a motion that the council of Gulu City receive the body of late Dr. Cipri Opira, I beg to move. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Your table remains honored. My name is Brinu Boye Habe. I'm a representative of the department of the Gulu City Council and Secretary of National Health. I rise to second a motion moved by the leader of government business and a people representative of the workers in Gulu City, Honorable Chriske Olukweske Olukweske, that the body of the late Dr. Cipri Opira, sorry, be received by as a sign of honor and respect for his good deeds for the people of Acholi region. Thank you so much.
Honorable members, when you proceed to the council? Honorable members, before you proceed, will allow me all the other experts to stand here and make their comments. Honorable members, before you proceed, will allow me with the power that have been granted to me by the constitution of the law and the local government act to constitute this honorable council into a council. It holds the proposals made before. Honorable members, allow viewers to recognize the presence of our top council, Chief Cattler, Deputy Cattler Chriske, before the top class. Honorable members of the executive, deputy, honorable members of the council, the priests, the family of the late Dr. Cipriano, the staffs of Lachoo Hospital, friends and family that are here, media fraternity, members of the public. It's a great loss to the citizens of Gulu City, Acholi Subregion, Uganda, and East Africa, and the whole world at large. It's a very painful moment that we are going through. As the speaker of Gulu City Council, I ask the honorable members and the family, friends, and relatives to also receive our condolences as we pay the last respects to our dear brother, our friend. I personally was a friend to Dr. Cipri. I knew Dr. almost fifteen years ago. If you are friend to Dr., Dr. will not show you any sign of segregation. He live a simple life like any ordinary person. So as we pay the last respects, I urge the whole public, friends, and relatives to join us as Gulu City Council, as we give him the last respects. I bring an apology from his worship, the mayor, who is not with us. He's abroad. I believe he has delivered this message through the deputy mayor, who is also the leader of government and business, who is also the mover of the motion today. So with this, therefore, this is Gulu City Council. We have honorable members from the division council. And I would also request them that they will also have a chance to speak in this honorable council. Because we have suspended the rule that gives them chance to participate. Let me recognize them if they have any insights. We will have the mayor from the two divisions and the honorable members this time. You must welcome. We have the district leaders from Acholi Subregion, to my rise up. They also by two are here. You must welcome. If you have anything to say, we shall give you chance to speak. But I request that, we are many and we have limited time here. So you just give us a brief history that you know about our late brother. And I will also branch the family member, one at least to speak. The doctor, senior doctor also to make a statement. And a friend to doctor, if at all we have one. And maybe one of the committee members that he chose to speak. And also honorable leaders, if you have one, as a helper, you also say one. So let us proceed as I invite the government, the leader of government business, to come and give us the Bible.
Madam Speaker, your table remain honored. I would now like to proceed and read the biography of late Dr. Cipri Opira as follows. Madam Speaker, late Dr. Cipri Opira, who most people refer to by abbreviation as CP, was born on the 11th September 1961 in Atia Kar Pabuga Amor Biscuit. His mother was late Aneta Ayah and father Muzey Umra Omari Abort of Okonatia Amor Biscuit.
Madam Speaker, Dr. CP was married to Florence Opira, with whom they had six children. He also took care of many children, relatives, and non-relatives. Education. Madam Speaker, Dr. CP began his education in 1967, running to 1973 and attained PLB. He proceeded 1974 to 1977 where he attained O level. 1978 to 1979, he attained A level. 1980 to 1985, he attained Bachelor of Medicine and Surgery. 1989 to 1994, he achieved a Master in Radiology and Science of Imaging. Additionally, Madam Speaker, Dr. CP studied several short courses and attained certificates in other fields of skills like business studies and medical related courses in his specialty, that is the medical profession. Work. Madam Speaker, Dr. CP began practicing his work profession in the year 1997 up to 2024. As an intern doctor, up to being an executive director and senior consultant radiologist. At the same time, Dr. CP taught at Gulu University in the capacity of a honorary lecturer at Department of Radiology Faculty of Medicine. Social life. Madam Speaker, Dr. CP held many social responsibilities such as past president rotary club Gulu, vice chairman diocese health board, order of merit Uganda Medical Association, ex-chairman board of trusty Gulu College School and Health Integrated Development Organization and Uganda Medical Association over Acholi branch. He was an active member of the Association of Radiologists in Uganda. And because of his exceptional ability, Dr. CP was awarded a Heroes in Health Award. That is lifetime achievement winner of 2023. Personality. Madam Speaker, Dr. Late CP was humble, dedicated, and hardworking. In summary, Dr. CP can best be termed as a service about himself at home, at work, and in the community.
Eight bracket. At the time of his death, late Dr. CP had clocked 63 years. Madam Speaker, colleagues, members of this great council of Gulu City and mourners, not excluding family here assembled, Dr. CP has been a prominent person in reference to this biography that I've just read. And he did not just render his service to Gulu City and Acholi Subregion, but to Uganda as a country in general. His death has left a big gap in the medical profession entirely. And therefore, as a sign of honor and respect for the significant roles and duties he rendered this nation, Uganda, I beg that the council of Gulu City respectfully pay tribute to him for his outstanding contribution. I beg to move.
Madam Speaker, I would propose that the communication of the deputy mayor be received by this great council and subjected to further deliberations, views, and other submissions of members of council and other dignitaries which your office took good consideration of. I beg to move, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Honorable Jok, representing person with disability. You will have to introduce yourself to the public because they don't know you. All of you who are speaking, you need to do so.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am Jok Patrick Mayor, councillor representing people with disability in Gulu City Council. Madam Speaker, I rise up to second the motion proposed by my honorable colleague Andrew Agüero. Thank you.
Honorable Morris?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. For purpose of full identity and by name of honorable Morris Odom, the last deputy speaker of Gulu Municipal Council in history and the first ever representative of La Ropéje South as a male representative of Council Five in Gulu City Council, I'm the chairperson of the Social Services Committee and the chairperson of the Building Control Committee. Colleagues, brothers and sisters, he allays before us a man and a genius whose hopes and aspirations has not lived to the expectations. But rather, we are forced to ground ourselves by the purpose to which his time has elapsed. Upon this, Madam Speaker and honorable members, I feel proud, but rather to say, as we celebrate his life and fully bear witness to his last day with us, I have this to say, that may the management of Lachoo Hospital in conjunction with the leadership of Gulu City Council declares a day that a public lecture probably on a yearly basis be conducted in his memory. First one, two, may the management and administration of Lachoo Hospital dedicate a special day in their calendar where maybe screening people of any other related diseases be done in his memory and that give not to be free of charge from the public. So that he is kept in our hearts for the rest of our lives. Madam Speaker, honorable colleagues, this gallant man that is laying before us here would not live long in our hearts if we do not take this initiative that will be written in his lives and maybe a curriculum be developed so that those who are undertaking professions that handles our health be reminded of his contribution graciously so that we are able to have him lived with us even when he is gone. I beg to submit. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I would like to take this opportunity for the purpose of second what my colleagues have proposed. Madam Speaker, dear mourners, the demise of the late Dr. Cipriano Opira is a big loss to us. Without any exaggeration, Dr. Cipriano Opira, commonly known as Dr. CP, was a distinguished professional, excellent person we should remember.
This hall has photographs of many distinguished Acholi. We want these photographs of Dr. Cipriano Opira to remain in this hall. If Odavien is there, you have to see. Oh, thank you. A sign man is now there before us here, Odavien. A sign man. Who's called his name? We call ourselves like that. Madam Speaker, I don't have much to say.
Looking at our city and the way it is located, I am also up to second the most moved by honorable doing somewhere that a portrait of his photos would be aunt in our great council. Secondly, Madam Speaker, we cannot only do that and we say it is enough. Madam Speaker, looking at the roads here in the city, there are number of roads with names that are not really clear to our great men and women. I therefore propose that one of the great road that is most likely to be in the next usement construction be given a name of the late Dr. CP in his memory so that time to time when we use that road, we really remember the great work that you have done for the entire country and abroad. I beg to submit here, Madam Speaker.
I thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to second what honorable Mageta said, but allow me also give this information. I renew, Madam Speaker, allowing to the leadership of La Ropéje City Division through the leadership of his worship, the mayor, Jofe Otie. As we speak, La Ropéje has already given it a road in the name of late Dr. Cipri Opira, commonly known as Dr. CP. And the road is in St. Mari's Road to Patiobo Roads. I am now up to second that the road be upgraded. The road be upgraded. The road be upgraded to Tama with a beautiful silver street light. The road is in Ropethe that we hold the biography of Dr. CP that we are still right now. He has done it out in the Health Department, like that also in the Education Department. So we feel it should really be remembered. And when we upgrade that road, and I want to propose, Madam Speaker, that it possible that this financial year, if it's not going to be possible, this financial year, then our city council will look into it in the next financial year, that the road really be upgraded and also it possible, giving it a beautiful street light, that everybody will move there and will remember Dr. CP with all the good things that he had done to her. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. You asked us to introduce ourselves. My name is Andrew Otoah Ogeta. I heard the voices of Ropethe now. Madam Speaker, we have lost a doctor and we are left with patients. Earlier on, we have been losing teachers, we are left with students. We have been losing engineers and we have been left with bad roads. And that is a real description of the region that we are in. I'm trying, I'm trying to address my mind to the health vacuum that we are in. Honorable Odom Morris, earlier on proposed for a public lecture. How I wish the public lecture would turn into a health advocacy mechanism. Because when you look at the unique position of Northern Uganda in this county, we are more sick than any other region. And if we look, if we lose doctors, we become more sick than other parts of the region, Madam Speaker. It is very hard to find radiologists in this county, especially at consultancy level. So hard. You, Madam Speaker. So the health vacuum we have is at practitioner level, at patient level, and how I wish this public lecture would turn as a health advocacy mechanism to benefit this region. Madam Speaker, the honorable Unachech Oketayor for Badegere, even now, also proposed that a road be then. I also respect very well the corrections that honorable Jan Susan brought in, that a road was already planned. And I would like to thank Ropethe City Division for planning a road during the life of somebody. That is something that while you are alive, you already saw the fruits of your service were already enjoyed. But as we think of always naming roads after people, we are not naming roundabouts after people. You always hear by the roundabout, by in town roundabout. Roundabouts also deserve net, especially for people who live an all-rounded life, like those who are before this council. I would incline and also summon the minds of my colleagues in this council that should we begin thinking of naming roundabouts? There is one actually in here, it is not called actually in roundabout, it has to be named. The one in Custom Corner is not called Customer Corner, Custom Corner Roundabout, it should have a name. The one at Petcher Stadium is not called Petcher Roundabout, it deserves a name that should be entered in the registry and the lands offices and all other relevant offices. I thought this was the opportunity to be, to begin doing such kind of work, Madam Speaker. Otherwise, I second all propositions that were brought by my colleagues. I beg to submit, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
All moners, in your respective capacities, my name is Caroline Rose Ado. In the council, I represent person with disabilities and I am the Secretary for Finance, Planning and Administration on Gulu City. Madam Speaker, dear moners, it's a sad moment, but we have to accept that death, it is inevitable. Once it is occurred, we have to take it that it has already happened. It is very sad. When I speak today, as we give respect to our father, to our dear doctor, to me, I am speaking seeing the entire St. Mary's Hospital, La Chou, in this great council. Madam Speaker, I've been a beneficiary of this hospital since the time of Doctor Atim. Mianatim, sorry, Mianatim. We used to call Mianatim up to when CP is the director. And now we are giving him last respect. Madam Speaker, the contribution of St. Mary's Hospital, La Chou, it's so great that we cannot even speak and finish. And I would like to speak to this council that as we give our last respect for the vacuum that has been left, we need to note that this hospital at the moment lack doctors that should attend to patients. And we know the number of patients that do go to St. Mary's Hospital, La Chou, they are really overwhelmed. And in this council, I'd like to propose, I know we shall not implement, but we need to make it go where it can reach at national level. If government can accept to employ at least five professional medical doctors sent to La Chou hospitals, it would be very good. Because I know there is also support going to St. Mary's Hospital, La Chou, through the government of Uganda. But when you look at the number of patients that leave government facilities, then go to St. Mary's Hospital, La Chou, I would propose that we, we push this concern to the relevant authority. And if we happen to achieve this, it would have made a very great contribution to the life of our community. Because when you look at the kind of patients that go to St. Mary's Hospital, La Chou, they rise from the very vulnerable people up to even those with money. So my concern is for the vulnerable people because currently I've seen, Madam Speaker, there is some little bit of change in the hospital. When you visit the hospital, there is now great emphasis of, okay, let me say, there is improvement on collection of fees for attending medical services. At past, even without money, you could be attended to and later on, you pay, but many has been mis, been abused in such kind of offer to the hospital, leaving the hospital in debt. And if now the hospital is not being facilitated by the patients who are paying, employing doctors become difficult. About three weeks ago, I happened to take my child to the hospital and the doctor who was attending to the children in the children ward, I almost shed a tears to that doctor. He said he started working in the morning, afternoon, again, he, again in the night, in the evening, when my, my, my child was attended to at around, around 2:00 PM, yet I said I was there by 5:00 PM. And you can see that kind of magnitude of work. It is not good for a healthy person to work that long. And there were only two, one person was out and he was alone. So if you support this hospital as government, we are supporting our people, we are not supporting just the hospital, but the citizens of Uganda. I would like to pray that we take this into consideration and we push this. With this, I beg to move. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to pay my last respect. Madam Speaker, honorable colleagues, dear moners, the late Dr. CP was really a great hero, especially for some of us who remain for testimony because we are beneficiaries in La Chou Hospital. This confirms the kind of personality he was. Self, with service above self, was really the kind of personality that the late was. I remember visiting La Chou many times, especially personally as a sick person and taking my relatives and family member. I remember him physically supervising staff in the wards during wards round. I strongly believed in him that was a role model to many young people who are joining the professional, I mean the profession.
Looking at the different services provided by La Chou Hospital, one that I give as a testament is the department that supports people with spinal injury. This department has remained very active up to date. Whenever someone gets a injury that is connected to spinal injury, there is free service in La Chou Hospital up to date. Actually, people with spinal injury even get free medical examination in all areas of your life. To me, this is a great really a leadership that needs to be emulated in the whole health service provision points. To this, I really pay my respect. This is a great loss. That is my prayer, that this service continues to exist in La Chou because it is a service that is supporting our population here. Currently, Madam Speaker, that is provided by La Chou is rare. If you move the entire country, you will find only La Chou Hospital supporting such vulnerable population. Lastly, is around ethical approval of research. We have known for many years La Chou has been supporting local researchers in many areas, whether students, whether people writing projects, and we know the reason why we do research, La Chou has been providing local ethical approval for this region. Actually, Gulu University has taken the same direction, Gulu Regional Referral Hospital has taken the same direction because La Chou was overwhelmed with this one. This is the kind of services that our population needs and we praise this through the leadership of the late Dr. CP. On that note, there are a lot of proposals that have been made through my honorable colleagues. Madam Speaker, there are many and therefore we need to prioritize this list. Like the road that are already being opened, like putting his picture in this hall or even in city council hall. I think those are priority lists that we need to prioritize and if possible, Madam Speaker, I request that this takes effect immediately in this by now, so here I beg to move. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Speaker. And by the name Luboy Durinabe, a councillor representing the people, Badegere, even now, at Secretary Education and Health. Madam Speaker, as we honor the hero who is in front of us, I also want to thank the wife of the late Dr. CP for taking good care of the doctor for all these years. Thank you so much, Madam. Madam Speaker, I, I am a born of La Chou Hospital. My home is not far from where the hospital is. I knew doctor way back. And by the way, La Chou Hospital is a hospital not profit, profit. From the years that Dr. CP entered La Chou Hospital, that was in 1993 up to now, very many doctors came to the hospital who are working in La Chou and very many of them left because of the, the little payment that is given to the doctors in La Chou. For those who are going to Kampala, attending medical services in Kampala, they can attest to this. That when you suppose you see a, a patient, suppose you can be given like about 500 to 600,000. But this man before us, never mind about that money, he dedicated his life for the life of the people in this region. I remember when Ebola hit Gulu, all the medical personnel, Madam Speaker, were scared. Many of them ran away from the hospital. But this doctor never went anywhere, never did go. He said he was the one supporting, checking the, 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 the workers to continue working. It was so hard for the people in Gulu, for the people in northern region, for the people who medical, staff of help is available in the community of Gulu. I want to say that there are very many things that were supposed to be in La Chou Hospital. I just want to know of that. I know because to La Chou Hospital, to continue doing the good work that this doctor has been done, have been doing with this. Thank you so much.
Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to pay my last respect to Mr. Dr. CP. I am a dear CP, the female U105 Gulu City. Madam Speaker, this is not the first time in the council blessing, proposing, speaking what we are supposed to do and leaving it to technical people to do it because our work only to speak. Through your table, Madam Speaker, with all what council has said and I ask the Department of Engineering Department to do this work. This man is not a man who joke, a man who was listening. This man is the man that everybody that pass through him, they have testimony about him. Why am I talking about the engineer, bring department? Because what I'm seeing in this here is that we politician are in the office. You can't talk with things to my base of knowledge. Technical people now they want to regard politician. They are forgetting that their work is to work, not to speak. He has to speak for them so that they know their work. He has to put the money where the He has to put the money where they are supposed to do the work, not again playing with the thing. Therefore, Madam Speaker, I request your table to put engineer, Ulu City engineer to work on that road well, not like the other road whereby they open and they leave grasses, start moving from the bush up to the land road. That one will lose a called emotion, emotion move by honorable Guetta, that better be give run above. Because if you give run above, they maintain it well because it's in the tarmac road. But the one that they take it the other side, they just leave it like that. Which with a big man like this, to me, I feel it is not necessary. So city engineer, he must do his, his work well and he must know his role that is not a politician. His work just to do the work, not to speak. Thank you, Madam.
I believe that the town clerk has taken note of what is going on and we have, our clerk has been taking the report of all the proposals made. Cindy is just crying. And I believe that she's feeling the pain just deep inside her. And we will take note of that, Honorable Cindy. It's a collective responsibility for all of us. And I have honorable Andrew, Andrew, you have spoken. You made a number of suggestions. So can I hear from you?
Madam Speaker, thank you once again. We have been advertising on billboards for business, but we have never used billboards for keeping our legacy. Tomorrow, where we sent off the late Jeko Bolanya, we went to Badhe, where we sent off the gala Paul Lokech. Today, we are for an emergency meeting in Gulu, where we are sending off Dr. C.P. Madam Speaker, Airtel is advertising in front of Centenary Bar. And at the city council, we sat about a year and a half ago and gave them a contract to use that board for three years and leave it for Gulu City. And I know after three years, the contract of Airtel to advertise on that board will have expired and they will hand over that board to the city clerk. I may not be part of that council after three years. But for those who will be in that council, how I wish for once that Gulu be in a regional city. Let us have a billboard for the legacy, not a billboard for business. If we put a billboard for the legacy, then the faces of those who bed Gulu become a city like that. Dr. C.P. would be ingrained well in a billboard for legacy. And then we would leave be used for keeping our legacy by putting such beautiful images and statues for the memory of this region and the memory of this city. I beg to move that this proposal be given, though for the benefit of the next government after hours. Thank you.
Honorable, it's a mayor. Can you help the best representative?
Madam Speaker, I thank you for again giving me this moment to pay my tribute to my brother, Dr. C.P. In regard Madam Speaker, at this moment, I'm rising up and standing as a workers representative because Dr. C.P. was a worker and within my jurisdiction. Madam Speaker, I feel that the legacy and commitment that Dr. C.P. portrayed must be adapted by especially those who hold the public offices. So that we serve the people in the right way and also we make the professions that we choose to serve in a better and beneficial manner to the common persons. Madam Speaker, on a very sad note, about two months ago, I lost my daughter because of medical negligence. Professional and committed doctor. My brother, Dr. C.P., I can only imagine and wish my child had been treated by such a man of integrity. Then the story of Pardimis would have been different. Madam Speaker, since we have suspended rules, may I use the phrase in my own language that Ane Tiana Lait. Therefore, Madam Speaker, I would like to pray that all of us gathered here to pay tribute to this exceptional man who loved his work and did it with love and perfection. Change how we do our work going forward. Because he has taught us that love what you do and do it passionately. To the many social responsibilities he rendered to the community. It is shown by his active participation. This means that we must, despite our work and professions, find time for the common persons via socialization and contribution. May we gather here today, take back this man's good examples and illustrations with us for practice and not for lamentation. I pray, may Dr. C.P.'s show grace forever and love peace. Amen.
So honorable members, we should also give chance to other people to speak. Speaker, you wanted to give information, Honorable?
Yes.
Information through?
Madam Speaker, it's a proposal last evening and the second one was not made. And I'm up to second the proposal made by Honorable Luboye about the city scan. Madam Speaker,
To be provided by who?
By the ministry. Madam Speaker, the Ministry of, of, of Health can provide city scans to Lachoo Hospital. This is indeed the fact, except that collectively as council with Lachoo Hospital, we can do that under the city scan and here.
Information, information, thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, if I do remember, there as pledge to support Lachoo Hospital with a city scan. Therefore, as Gulu City Council, we can now follow up in the pledge to make sure that the city, the city scan is being brought to Lachoo Hospital. Thank you.
We will get that information before we sit?
Proposal, Madam Speaker, yes.
Before we make another proposal on the road?
But Madam Speaker, I would request that you allow me supplement something small on what my honorable colleague, honorable Cindy I hear said. It's my humble request. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I feel so touched when you hear honorable member, if you hear the submission of honorable Cindy and the submission of honorable Andrew Guetta, that every time we sit in this great council, we always have the city clerk in the house, we have all the technical staff, even the engineering department that attend some of our proposals goes to their department. But implementation is always not being taken seriously. And therefore, through you, Madam Speaker, I want to ask my honorable colleague, honorable Odom Morris, that we are going to sit in for our committee meeting by next week as proposed by the Business and Welfare. Can we now not forget as the political leaders that we are left with a very few months to go back to the field? And believe we all know by that time, we shall have no time to follow up all what we have passed here. So I would therefore request that, we have just been for our budget conference and the number of roads that have been named for tarmac in this financial year, can in the committee sit and prioritize one that has already been given by LaRope in name of Dr. C.P. to be tarmac this very financial year. So that as we also need this great council, we have some here at least to show. Because we have a number of paying large respect to our other people here, but none of them has always been implemented. That is my honorable request. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. I think I will not get up again to speak, but also allow me introduce myself as you say. My name is Susan Anachan. I am the woman city councillor, five of LaRope, the South. Chairperson Finance, Planning and Administration, Production and Marketing, Gulu City Council. Thank you.
Agreed one because we are running out of time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Your turn will remain honor. I'm Roba Khan Daniel, the main good councillor of Gulu City Council. Madam Speaker, ah, a lot, we have been staying here as the councillor of Gulu City. But my request, through the TC, everything we agree as a TC, let's work on it, to respect our father for the work he has done in this actual round. Thank you.
Proposal, Madam Speaker?
Proposal?
Ah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I am up to propose that as the leadership of this council deliberated quite enough and I would wish and as on the same note, I am one of those who must declare for this meeting that my family of late engineer, Patrick Odonu Tivi, benefited from a swift action by council of Gulu Municipal Council. When my late brother, late engineer, Wotofonya was murdered, the council, the council made proposals and a road was named after him. The road that connects from the ladder, ah, up to, 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 to behind Sinabey. Wotofonya road was named after my late brother. And being the chairperson of Building Control Committee, I would wish to lay your fears that whenever proposals of this kinds are made, people sit on it. I would wish that in the presence of the very many of us, this has to be expedited so that we live by what we speak. Thank you very much.
Honorable Andrew?
Madam Speaker, in his kind words, honorable Odom Morris asked that we benefit the audience and dignitaries with time and I'm up to second that we benefit the audience and the dignitaries with time to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, same honorable mayor for Badegale, please. Honorable Lumumba?
Easy, a member of city council.
Honorable Speaker, then the what you were like, you were not sleeping because you suspended. Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. Thank me, honorable, suspended that rule. That's why we are going to give chances to, chances to all, all the invited guests here, we will have their representative. We are going to have a speech from a family member, a friend, a doctor, and a civilian doctor who also speak in this council. Honorable mayor?
Madam Speaker, of the city council, you are meeting members of the city council, members of other council in the Chilisap region water here, the leadership of Lachoo Hospital, the donors of Lachoo Hospital, mourners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Honorable Patrick Lumumba. I'm the man where Lachoo Hospital is situated and South Ash. Madam Speaker, permit me to thank members of your council for coming with wonderful proposals which are seconded and will be our working judgment. Among them, the learning of road, which is, I mean, the upgrading of the road, which was only then after our doctor Cipri and Agera. And the proposal that it have to be upgraded into bitumen or tarmac so that it's a road that is usable, beautiful enough and have light. I'm a member of the city road committee. I would like to pledge on my own behalf and also on behalf of my colleague mayor who will also speak, Honorable Tim Jofflin, and all the members of the city road committee, that we shall prioritize this road. We shall relocate resources for building tarmac and make sure that in the subsequent, I mean, in the, the next tarmac construction, this road is upgraded into tarmac. I am very certain that the members of parliament, we see it with them, we all agree with us. And if it's a council resolution, who are we then to play with it, which I expect it and I want to put this one very clearly. Madam Speaker, I also support and thank your members for post lecture day and all the district council, but in every council in the Chilisap region where Lachoo Hospital South and Dr. C.P. are South. And that mean from tomorrow, we request by the Lachoo Hospital, I care today to provide for us a picture which we put in our council starting today. That's the council of Badegale, you said it better. Madam Speaker, everyone talk of Dr. C.P. as a man of integrity. A man who live with the fullness of his life and the expectation of mankind and golden ever. Permit me, Madam Speaker, to bear testimony, to give my testimony, a very big one. Last year, I got a kidney, a kidney poisoning and I was rushed to Lachoo Hospital by Nightway ambulances. And the director of Nightway was the one who advised me that don't stay home in a minute. Go to Lachoo Hospital and you be in the arm of Dr. C.P. and you are like, he said. When I was there, there was a request for my daily hospital be tested, which unfortunately was not done by the intern doctor for close to two days. And one evening, it was cold evening, I went out just to have a, a breath of air. And one evening, it was cold evening, I went out just to have a breath of fresh air. And that is the time when I came back to my hospital bed. I lost breath and I was losing breath very fast and my heart was stopping. So before my heart stopped, stopped working, I made a request to my wife, and this is what I told her. I said, I am going to die few minutes from now. The only way for you not to get more as what happened in this small room, because I was a private, go now and go for Dr. Cipri. He's the only man who would save me. My wife became 18, and she said, she went out and found Dr. Cipri is in a meeting, a group of doctors. I asked her, go and invade that meeting. Go and open the door for that meeting, announce to Dr. Cipri that the mayor of Badegale Ebi is dying. Because she could not act and speaking more timid, he to ask one of the staff of Lachoo Hospital to do the same, Okera, who work in finance, Okera asked, and they went. And he need your attention. Now, can he stop the meeting and go and attack his life? Doctor came with a group of doctors whom they were at the meeting. And indeed, when he came, he said, my life, the first decision he made is putting him on oxygen. I could hear him speak, putting him on oxygen is losing breath very fast. And when he was put on oxygen, he said, where are the drugs you are putting? I mean, you are administering, double the drugs, the concentration of the drug, remove his blood test for malaria and do a rapid test. The rapid test was showing I was so having malaria three plus. And one of the doctor became scared and said, we cannot administer this drug double at the same time administer malaria drug, which are all very concentrated. If we are going to get this depression. He hit the second card and said, why did you do before? You could have transpired all your history here. Now, okay, now this is what we do. Can the person take water? And I know that they said, yes, I can take water. So they said, okay, in the end of 30 minutes, I administer the work, the malaria drug was shown. And then the person take a lot of water, should take water constantly, so that water keep washing, the concentration of drugs in his body. And that is what happened that night and here I am alive. How I wish my wife can give me a baby boy and then named after him. I am very serious, because I have baby boy, I have boys, I've named them after names. Now I'm doctor, the letter has come this day. The name of Joseph Alidion, what do you have to do in my life? And I pray for that, and I will go to the hospital and give me a baby boy. Other than that, Madam Speaker, permit me now to propose other thing which are not being proposed. I read in the book and they say, if you want to be a member, study. But if you want to be a member for long, plant trees. I want to propose that Lachoo Hospital dedicate for us a day for tree planting, which we do it around our roads. And the road I proposing, in the road in Badegale Ebi, which runs from Oil Town and Center Two connecting to Tamak, because that road is meant to command me to bring patient to Lachoo. It's about four kilometer road. And we plant trees which we stay for decades, like the trees we have here in Kondala Ground. That way, we will also beautify some of the trees and have his name and names of other doctors of Lachoo Hospital, who are already going to be with the road, including Dr. Mukweya. We will put stones beneath those trees and name after them. And I want to place that the division will take care of these trees to afford survival. I also want to propose that since we are making a dormitory in many parts of the primary school, we will, we propose to the Catholic Church to accept the dormitory to be named either after his name or we have a dormitory which already there named after Dr. Cyprian Opeera. Opeera either. And that way... The lifestyle of Dr. Cipri. These two proposal of planting trees should also be adopted in the sister divisions in the city by the district, I say the meeting of the City Council, Gulu District and other local government as well. These are the proposal that I want to make. But Madam Speaker, as I sit down, allow me also make a request to our doctors in this city. If everyone stand up and say Dr. Cipri was a lifesaver, was so committed, was humble, was a man of integrity, we need to obey this. He was a very kind man. How I wish all the medical person can be as kind as he is, especially those who work in the emergencies department. And this should not only be implemented in Lachoo Hospital, but also in Gulu Hospital. We have so many patient who loses life because the doctors are not rapidly attending to them. They are complaining of this and that instead of saving life. This way, God will bless our medical practitioners. Having said all this, I want to say, doctor, I know you're in heaven. Pray for us, my men, to live the kind of life they have lived and also one day meet in heaven and meet the grace before our Lord Jesus Christ. I would like to submit, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was a long speech. But I also request that we have the Division Mayor for La Ropete and then we get only two honourable councillors for the Division. Choose yourself, agree among yourselves. And then we will now hold straight for have speeches from the following mayor holder. We'll have Dr. Amorley, this guy is from Bigs dropped up, who will make this speech. Then we have doctor from Lachoo. And then we have Justice Chan, who will talk on behalf of the family. And then we also have speech from Gulu University. While we also recognize the presence of the woman member of Pardeman for Gulu City. She is supposed to sit somewhere there, where she is born. We invite the honourable members of Pardeman for Gulu City. We will be recognizing them while they come. So Honourable Mayor, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The bereaved family, the fraternity of Lachoo Hospital, Gulu University. Madam Chair, Speaker for allowing the body of our brother, our doctor, to be laid before council, I salute you for this wise decision. I'm not going to make a lot of statement. I'd like to thank the council for the resolution you have made, various resolution you have made. First of all, I think some of the thing that happen in our lives are really plan of God. La Ropete a road that is already in existence, the name of Dr. Cipri. Even in the current budget, we have indicated this road, Dr. Cipri, to be upgraded to Tamak. It was already done by La Ropete City Division. Much much ahead when Dr. Cipri alive, it was good plan for this. So I'm happy that now Gulu City Council is speaking, we shall also make a close progress that this road is done. I'd like to thank God for the nice... Life that managed to emulate. The only thing that I know that Dr. La was pride and arrogant. Like that, those two words, my husband, he spoke up loud. I think it is a lesson to us to take home that much as we do various, we hold various position as doctors, as politician, it is always good to be humble to people we serve. And this is a lesson that we have to learn from his life and we appreciate him for that. I'd like also to thank the fraternity of Lachoo Hospital for the great work that we are doing to the country. We know on the choice of a win, in terms of the number of patient that go there. I also appeal to city council to consider, since we have one wing of Pardeman here, some of their facility within city should be upgraded to a center four, so that we reduce the number of the patient that goes to Lachoo and other health facility, including the regional hospital. Hospital like, health center like a here center, Badegale Tech or Health Center should be upgraded so that they take much of those numbers. Because we have heard here that doctors there work even minus large, and these are also in company. I think city council should take up this as something very important, so that we have our doctors. I said all this for God in my country and may this all of our doctor resonate with this.
The good councillors?
Thank you very much.
Do you want, we have one behind here? Okay, speak then. You can introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I am Leonard Ngati, representative of the elders in La Ropete. And I'm up to say something little. A lot have been saying, Madam Speaker, certainly that the words are going over. But I only want to give a description of the lady whom have been seen whether they go to hospital. This is, to me, this man is not segregated in this world. If you look at the place where I used to work, in the review, review of the section, there are only so many people, but you find working tirelessly without even mind of time. So this guy, this lady, Dr. Cipri, is not segregated. He's a man who is human, he is kind, so he's a great leader. I thank you both.
Other district councils, that regards, the fraternity of the medical practitioners, the bereaved families, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roba Patrick Omakete. I am the speaker of Badegale Ebi City Division, where the lady has a home. Madam Speaker, a number of proposals must be made. I am not going to make a serious proportion, proposal, but I want to say a few thing. But number one, I come from Atiyaka, together with the lady, Dr. Cipri, that is now laid before us. As the country mourns his loss, as a sub-county of Atiyaka, it is hit more hard than any part of the region. Number two, I am also a beneficiary of the services rendered to the many Ugandans from Lachoo Hospital. I took my mother one time when she had some complications in her... Your mother to a consultant, so you are going to pay heavy, because for us, we will pay the fees according to our level. I also answered him jokingly that life is very expensive. Indeed, he did what he would do on my mother and we came back, came back with the mother. We lost her several months later. May her soul rest in peace. Many of us have various professions. I want to say many of us are called to our profession. There are also many who are pushed to their various professions. Anything that you do, if it is a call, the results are always enormous. And it is the reason we have the late Dr. Cipri before us today. I now want to say, because life has to continue. I know after a few weeks, the lady is going to be replaced in Lachoo Hospital as the executive director. How I wish that person who will take up that position emulates the good... Ignorantly, I thought after circumcising him, he would get well. I told the mother, take him to the fourth division to be circumcised. I was in Kabaramai Road. Then the mother told me, I was referred to Lachoo Hospital. And I was like, what the hell is going on? How can a patient to be circumcised, get referred from a health center four to Lachoo Hospital? I told the mother, wait, I am coming to take the boy myself. And when I came back, before I took the boy, I met Dr. Cipri. He called a colleague that I don't remember the lady. I was like, I am getting a doubt. My boy was referred from the health facility in the barracks to be circumcised from here. Does it mean we don't have the required personnel in the barracks for the circumcision? Then he told me, you have to bring the boy and we see. When I took the boy, they examined him and they told me that the boy has a condition that is called hypospancy. And circumcising him would deprive him of the tissues that is needed to rectify the problem. So ignorantly, I want to say, if I fall sick, we look onto the doctors to save our lives. But when a doctor falls sick, I don't know who they look up to, to serve. It is on the basis of this that I want to say, there should be a deliberate effort to intensify, massage. Those doctors who are here, please intensify. We have a lot of life-threatening diseases that needs solutions. Let us do a lot of massage.
You will do some rest, please?
I am coming to the end now. My mayor made some proposal that the hospital should designate a day for us to plant trees along the roads. And that proposal is not yet seconded. As members of City Division, we are not allowed to do it. I only want to remind that when you get back the house to your side, let those proposals be seconded. The lady has a home in Badegale Ebi. So I would also propose that on the day we will start to planting those trees, we shall start from his home, then move to the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are not going for stories now. We have limited time. Allow me once, opportunity to the mayor of Atiyaka, where the lady come from. It's right behind there. While I also recognize, I also recognize the presence of... I also recognize the presence of Dr. Atim, the daughter to the late Poti, she's here with us. Mama, can this happen for a politician? May the team speaks low on the, she speak actually. I think we should also give her a chance to speak. Yes, I also recognize my mentor, Dr. Ned Whisos, a father in the house. And we also recognize the DVC, which is also part of people who are going to give a speech, and also the secretary for that university, secretary university. US is also present, you must welcome. Other dignitaries will continue recognizing your presence as we proceed. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and all the honorable members of the city council and other councils that have joined us today. I want to take this singular honor to first of all appreciate your bold decision to come and lay respect to our departed father, mentor, and also an elder from Atiyak. Thank you so much as a council. Secondly, allow me to appreciate all mourners, development partners and foundations who have joined hands with us to lay respect to my departed father. I want to say thank you so much. Honorable Speaker, allow me to take this opportunity on behalf of the council, of Atiyak Town Council, to join my colleagues in adoptions of the motions and proposals as far met and play my role as the head of political wing that I will go back and sit down with our council and make sure these motions and proposals are adopted and made part of our official working documents for implementation back at home. With those very many words, I want to say thank you to everyone. As a son and a child in the family, I can't make much submission here. I only give appreciations to all of you in your different capacities for having made it here and made this day as memorable as possible moving forward. I beg to submit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My name is Francis Atim. I represent the people of Guro Kewad in Badegale Yebi City Division. Madam Speaker, they always say that politicians think of the next election. But statesmen think of the next generation. The late Dr. Ciprian Opeira was a statement because of his contribution to humanity and how he continues to inspire us in this journey of life. Madam Speaker, Lachoo Hospital has been so instrumental in building medical doctors, especially at Gulu University. We all know that most of the medical interns, medical interns do their trainings from Lachoo Hospital. Madam Speaker, I thank the government of the Republic of Uganda of giving Gulu University a teaching hospital. Gulu University is here able to be represented by the university secretary, the deputy vice chancellor, and also we have our able representative of Gulu City Council to the university council, Horrible Patrick Gane. Madam Speaker, I propose that one of the hospital blocks of the teaching hospital that will be constructed at Gulu University be named after the late Dr. CP. I beg to submit this.
If we don't be talking without taking decision, then we not have a meaning of our sitting here. So can I hear from honorable, just in few seconds, honorable Uchere?
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. I salute everybody in the house. Dr. CP is not only a doctor, but his call was from God to execute his duty that he has done. He has not left bill but a way to those who are able to hear and listen to. For us persons with disability, we are in a total sorrow. Because wherever we go to St. Mary's Hospital at Lachoo, he would say, serve these persons, they are really disabled, they cannot withstand for a long period of time, serve them. Now he is gone. How shall we be as persons with disability? It's a call to many. I need to say that Dr. CP had been a person whom God made. And I believe God has picked him because God has a provision for him to have many in heaven. And I do say, members, let us talk and think that tomorrow shall I be given honor like now Dr. has been given? If not that, then let's not say we go to heaven, let's say we shall go to the bushes. Because our acts and deeds in the world may not portray where we should be. Doctor has made it and I pray that let us all be the way he is or yet been. I do say, we will not put his pictures, but we shall put his portraits. As you use good words, because the body is here but the spirit is alive. And if he hears, we are making things that must portray him well, he will not be happy being in heaven. Members, let's say that persons with disability seriously mourn for him. And other medical practitioners, wherever you see us, hello pass and be with us so that time and again we remember you. God bless him in heaven. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We want to also people playing here. While we also recognize the presence of the RSE five of Noya District. You recognize your presence? You have something to say? Just in one second. Close of time.
Madam Speaker, the honorable members of this august house, the honorable member of parliament present, the bereaved family, the nation Uganda that is presented within this august house today. My name is Imam Alorak, the chairman of the RSE five of Noya District Local Government, but also the chairperson of the actually RSE fives. Madam Speaker, I want to thank you for the brilliance in your gray hair and your counsel for picking this day to remember, to pay tribute to our father, to pay tribute to the great doctor. I thank you all for this great happening. I want to testify a bit, honorable speaker, allow me do this. I almost died in 2020 when I was hit by lightning. The chair I was supposed to sit in was split into two by lightning, but I didn't start. The person who saved my life was none other than Dr. CP. Honorable Speaker, just the day passed on, ladies and gentlemen, I had a son who was going to die of cancer and I was called to help. I picked a phone to call the great doctor lying before us today. Only to realize that he demised. My heart sank. Before I was, honorable speaker, as a beacon of hope, is a lifesaver who is gone today. As somebody said, the late is a symbol that should not just be left on our walls. I propose that honorable speaker, a monument in his memory should be established in a strategic place within the city. I also propose that we have had great leaders, great personalities naturally of the region who have passed on and their contributions visibly seen. That stamland should be set aside so that the monuments could also be built there. That will go a long way to remember them. As Noya District Local Government, we have a health centre three that has been built who will pick up a block in his memory. But I also want to thank my honorable colleague who said Gulu University is opening up a 241 bed hospital university. Dutch teaching university, some good block should be given in this memory. Honorable Speaker, thank you so much for this opportunity. May the soul of my father, my mentor rest in peace.
Thank you. And now we draw the microphone here. Let the microphone move in hand. We'll have the following people to speak to us. We'll start with the family. Let us listen from the family. And then the next speaker will be Lachoo Hospital, which is going to be done by Dr. Udom. And before, maybe immediately after him, we have Dr. Atim Hamsi to also say one. And then we proceed. Justice Chan, who spoke on behalf of the family. We have suspended orders, the rules, so my husband has been mindful.
Madam Speaker, distinguished councillors, distinguished Ugandans who are here to remember my nephew, Dr. CP. As a background, I'll say that Dr. CP's mother was my sister. Um, Dr. CP's mother was my sister. That's why I speak on behalf of the family. I thank the city council and all the other councils for this occasion, giving time to remember my nephew. We can never thank you enough, Madam Speaker and your team. We can never thank the rest of you enough for taking time to come and remember Dr. CP. I want to speak directly to Atim to say, yeah, poor you, you know, thank you so, so much for the grooming that your parents did to make Dr. CP what he was. A lot has been said about his character, his integrity and so on. I will not repeat that. But I want to speak to those of you who serve the public in the public sector. And I do this, I do this in authority because I was head of the recruiting agency in the nation for eight years. The thing that pains me the most is the lack of integrity. Which commits my duty among other public servants. So if you have learnt anything at all from Dr. CP's life, pick on integrity and stick with it. And Dr. CP was not a man after material things. Of all the professionals I know in actually, they all have homes in Muyenga, in Chiwetuli, in such and such a place, me and the city, beautiful homes. Perhaps not here, in their village. Dr. CP had no home in Kampala that he built for himself. Dr. CP lived on the hospital complex all his life. You could have built a house somewhere here in senior quarters, but it didn't occur to him to do that. And that is what I cried for, for my people. This hall, I saw it way back when I was in B four. It has remained the same. Today I'm going to propose that we do something, not just as people in Gulu, but in actually. We must transform this to be a proper legislative council. If every family puts in a thousand shillings throughout the journey, we will transform this place with the work of our councillors, accountable and meaningful. I see people running around with speaker, with microphones and that cannot be. That should not be. Madam Speaker, I thank all of you. I just stop here, but the issue of integrity in the public service. We go to the land office here. You, some of you know. That must change even if we are going to transform this land. You have heard of something called Roger Page? I'm one of those involved in Roger Page. And we are going to have a second Pongo meeting in December. Here, looking, I invite everyone to come and participate for that. Nobody will cap in here now. That is our meeting. Mela opa duwe. But daily mature on mona chilichi beni duxien. I expected meeting kind of team level who, I know damn well they have perfect English. That must not go to you. That cannot be new taro in Benutaro. Madam Speaker, sorry. I apologize. But for you, for you, the councillors, we love you, honor you, remember you the rest of our life. I'm for you, for you, Madam Speaker, for you to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justice. Thank you. We spoke on behalf of the family. Thank you for recognizing the presence of the public members. We have the next person. It's Dr. Umona. I mean, Dr. Monet. We have Dr. Monet. Our mother of speech. It's not well organized, but just bear with us.
Madam Speaker, honorable members of the council, other political leaders here present, the medical fraternity here present, the bereaved family, for the mourners. I stand here on behalf of the medical fraternity. I was asked to move a lot of dance. To Gulu City Council for honoring our colleague.
Maybe you do it later. Can I ask a thing? Thank you. Can we have Dr. Udom from Lachoo Hospital?
Honorable Speaker, you are members of the Red Council, the bereaved family, honorable Galadee, Gulu City, the medical fraternity. I want to first of all thank you and your council. the great people, the Pedro Red, Dr. C.P. Also want to thank you for forthcoming with the decisions which will come in. You all, I continue, allowing to do a bit of introduction, I think is important, for this council and the members who are available here. Dr. C.P. was our executive director. But he was being assisted by three other directors. And I want them to be introduced, started by introducing Dr. Okwana David Martin, who is the institutional director. Also want to introduce Professor Ademahla, society director. And now, the third person is a hospital administrator, if you are there, can you stand up? And myself, Dr. Udom Enebongbeira, and I acknowledge this, then for that. This is a consultant of directors who are working closely with the city. The committee called Internal Management Board. So all the divisions of the hospital was being taken by the Internal Management Board. He was the A executive. Dr. C.P. I'm doing as way back to the year 1985, after the 30th Oscaristic, the 30th year. And he has been working in La Jo Hospital for the last 39 years. That's not a small number of years in service. He was the second staff at La Jo Hospital by Ghana of Ghana all these years. We were grateful, the Ghanaian of Ghana, having his second of the city at La Jo Hospital, where he served until his retirement three years ago. He has retired, but was still active at La Jo Hospital. Many things happened during his business office. Remember HIV AIDS, the game, the AIDS, the TV. Remember the protective L R A war? You remember the serious Ebola, who was that Gulu district at that time? Where we lost 13 hospitals, huh? You remember COVID-19? 2019, 2020? Good as you guys, collaboration with Gulu University, correct? Now we have a school of medicine in Gulu. And La Jo Hospital became one of its kitchen sides. With Gulu University, I mean, Gulu University on the other side. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to Gulu University in this town. Because they calling us seven lecturers. They are working full-time like La Jo's customers. Take our gratitude for the top management of Gulu University. When Dr. Kobe died in the year 2003, Dr. C.P. was supporting him. He worked with the then director, Dr. Bruno, until Dr. Bruno resigned or retired in the year 2008. He was then appointed executive director, 2008. Dr. Martin Okwana was appointed institutional director in 2008. Myself was appointed medical director in 2008. Together with Dr. C.P., who he served for 16 years in leadership. I want to thank him for showing us a great leadership as the executive director. I will not take too much time, you know, this is a council, a team. If somebody gave us a word of thank for all the services we give free at La Jo Hospital. This is actually where our heart is. If it was possible to give free service to all the poor people of Greta, that no one, somehow we have some money boost to take care of. That's why I emphasize very big a piece to our patients. It's not only the paralysed patients, we have to get few side of La Jo Hospital. We have patients who are vulnerable and tested, who they get older, but we still have to take care of that. We have children with cancer, we have women who have suffered history during their birth, they get beauty and proud faces as well. And we do this continuously and we say never stop doing it. Because that is the reason why we exist. He has been sick for the last five years. And Dr. C.P. never stopped. And said, "To the last one month, the evolution was short." He tried to advance it, and it was. And he said, "So always still have to move." I will start with precious. And I think he did that right. He deserved it more like than it was ever seen. I would now want to thank all those who gave him a breakthrough at City and when he was sick. Maybe he still goes to the one, Lord, and his children. But be very close in his bed, helping where possible. Make sure he doesn't die, you know? Doesn't die means so much pain. There are other doctors, especially the doctors, especially the Morlado. I know they may not be here really want to to give him all their effort to save his life. There were so many of the doctors which went through his hands, maybe I'm a medical student, but especially those who worked in La Jo before and they were in Morlado, were always checking on him and even updating us. In particular, I want to thank one of the nursing officer called Agado Jen. This is a group like the best of us, okay? And I think it was a right to have extend this in a formal way. We deeply mourn his loss. We honor his legacy. If we weren't to miss, he will be again, thank you, doctor.
Honorable Speaker, members of the council, I cannot thank all of you enough for for how you're honoring Dr. C.P. here. 20 years ago, the council did the same thing for my father. And never I would have thought that me and my colleagues would be here to send off Dr. C.P. I find this, can I say intolerable? Very difficult to tolerate. I won't go through what Dr. C.P. was because it has been said. But maybe his, his leadership, his kindness, he was such a kind man. And one thing that he has spoken about, his smile, which he would give to anyone with a high or low. And when he smiled, it looked as if the sun came out. It's the smile of a special person who is good inside. It comes out of that, and it came out with him. He followed my dad's footsteps in radiology. And as the board member of La Jo Hospital, I could really witness the work of Dr. C.P. and of his colleagues, Mr. Adom and Mr. Martin in the board. And I can tell you what they don't know, because when there were the board deliberations on future director, executive director of the hospital, we were all very worried because we knew that Dr. C.P. was the only radiologist in northern Uganda. How can you appoint someone to be executive director of such a large hospital and take him away from radiology, which is also his life, his profession? So the decision was made to appoint a very strange directorship at La Jo, i.e. to have the executive director to lead especially with his wisdom and his guidance and for the very strategic things. But to put most of the workload of medical director and institutional director on the shoulder of his colleagues so that Dr. C.P. would be more free to be a radiologist. So I need to thank Mr. Adom and Mr. Martin for all these years of having borne a lot of the tasks that should be tasked to the executive director in order to allow him to do what his job was, to be a radiologist for everyone. And that's the amazing thing about Dr. C.P., is was his care for everyone. And what he did, I cannot thank Ms. Florence more because if he could do something, then it is thanks to having a wife who supports him. Or else a man would not be able to do that. And I thank the directors, including Kipor Administrator and scientific director, Dr. Ochola, for being here and for...
The Honorable Member of Parliament for Gulu City, the family represented by Ralph Chan Justice, you all monas who are here, and Professor David O'Callaghan, the Deputy Vice Chancellor in charge of academic affairs of Gulu University. I stand here on behalf of the council, the management and the senate of Gulu University. I also stand here on behalf of the vice chancellor who is the head of the senate and management and who has traveled to Belgium. Honorable Speaker, allow me start by thanking you and your council for honoring a man who has not been a politician, but a clinician and a trainer of medical personnel. It's rare that such persons are honored in this kind of house, but this gesture is very, very important and makes each and every one of us works hard to achieve just such an honor when we are not there. Number two, Honorable Speaker, Ciprian has been a staff of Gulu University teaching our students of medicine. I would like to attest that the doctors that have been trained in Gulu University are excellent doctors. We have got feedbacks from all over the country and I think this has come because of the knowledge that has been imparted by Ciprian and the other doctors in Lachoo and Gulu University. May I request the doctors that have been trained in the arms of Ciprian to emulate his good deeds and carry on the light that he has lit. Number three, Honorable Speaker, Ciprian has been a clinician, as I said, a person of excellence. He has treated many far and wide. I got the testimonies here. I must say I'm one of them, but I can't go to the details of the treatment he gave me. I only learned one thing that is an excellent person. He was. Now, to carry on his work, Gulu University has seconded and deployed seven specialists to Lachoo to help with the work, clinical work in Lachoo, including training the medical personnel that come for training in Lachoo. Finally, Madam Speaker, in the interest of time, Gulu University has a proposal to honor a man of excellence, a man of dedication, but I don't have the powers to declare what our proposal is here. Our proposal will go through our structures, through the council and Madam Speaker, you will be informed accordingly. This also includes the proposal that has already been made about naming a block in the hospital that is yet to be built. Madam Speaker, don't have any doubts in me. This honor will come. Allow me to say that God gives and is the one who takes away. And may the beautiful soul of Dr. Rupira Ciprian rest in an everlasting peace. Amen.
Gulu University, you have the last speaker and that is none other than Dr. Moni from Ministry of Health. We will bring the microphone back to council where we'll have the ex-officials who are also part of the council who also make a remark.
Madam Speaker, the woman member of parliament, Gulu City, the great family, fellow monas. I want to begin by making one correction. My name is the Ondajunshon Ammoni. I'm a retired commissioner from the Ministry of Health. I stand here, one, on behalf of the protocol of meeting and two, I also want to say my medical professional started from Lachoo Hospital long during the time of the cotis and we benefited so much in the hands of Dr. C.P., Dr. Adom, Dr. Martin and many others. And after a long tour of duty, I ended up at the Ministry of Health and I became responsible for what Dr. Adom said, the seconded staff from the Ministry of Health and the medical interns. From all what the council, members of council, I say, there are many people who have spoken. They believe me that Dr. C.P. stands tall among the medical fraternity. He was a true doctor or a medical doctor by definition. Brilliant but humble, hardworking, yet he had time to mix with the community, including being a bus poster of a rotary club and that is where he self provided service above self. Madam Speaker, this is a true icon. Unless I told you earlier, I'll stand on behalf of the medical fraternity. That is the medical doctors, the nurses and the midwives, the pharmacists and all the allied professionals. And these are people who look at Ciprian as somebody who had believed in them. I want to thank so much the Honorable Council of Gulu City Council who are forgiving us this time, for honoring our own. This, we don't take lightly. Amidst your busy schedule, it took more than two hours or three hours to sit here and honor Dr. C.P. Please accept our sincere thanks. To all the promises that has been made here, naming a road in this honor, naming a roundabout in this honor, the Deputy Vice Chancellor, as I said, if it materializes that naming a block in the medical hospital training institution in the university, that would be so great. As a medical professional fraternity, we also noted the comments that came. I want to say that the medical fraternity with what we have and the dignity of Dr. C.P., we want to commit ourselves to the patients that are going to be in our care. We should serve with dedication so that the community will also honor our work the way we have today honored the work of Dr. C.P. With this, Madam Chair, I want to end here and again thank Gulu City Council for this time that they've given us. May the soul of our here in health rest in peace. Thank you.
We have Reverend Father Romano Uma associated with us. Thank you for coming and being with us. Lastly, we have Reverend Father William Machara associated with us. Thank you for coming. Honorable Member of parliament, you came in a little bit late and a number of proposals made and I believe that with what you have had, you can pick from there. And I pray that we have limited time. We are supposed to sit all for two hours and we have taken three hours and other services are being hired so we need to also honor our time. I request you to stand up and speak and then we ask the town clerk to make this commitment and the mayor, the deputy mayor, give the speech of the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and the House. I am here to pay tribute to the family of the late Dr. Ciprian, to Gulu as ladies and to us here in Lachoo as a whole and medical fraternity. That Wednesday when we lost him was a dark Wednesday. I wanted to go and check on him in Malang. I was in Kampala. Tuesday I went to check on the son of the late Dr. Rupira who also passed away last, say last Saturday. I only learned on Sunday that the son of the late Dr. Rupira also passed away. It was very hurting. He was at a hospital in Nalia. We talked a lot with the mother and she told me about the late Dr. Ciprian. And I caught somebody in Malang Hospital and told me where he was and I said, "Okay, tomorrow in the evening, why don't go back home and pass by?" Only to see in social media his picture. Rest in peace. It was so hurting. People have said a lot. I came and found at least also saw what other people say from the mayor of Gulu, of Badegi Lahebi. I think I stand together with them and also thank city council for this honor. This part of the dedicating ceremony we are sad but at the same time happy that we are actually giving him a dedicating ceremony. All of us remember how we sent off the late Dr. Rupira. When we talk of the doctors of Lachoo Hospital, the cotis, then straight away we go to the late Dr. Rupira and then now Dr. Ciprian. The late Dr. Rupira was a difficult ceremony but this one is a little bit better because we are here to honor him. And I want to thank everybody who gave a proposal, at least a proposal of names of the roads or visitor blocks in some facilities, high waterhead facilities or in schools with this man. This is beautiful so that his memory can help to remain fresh in our minds. Dr. C.P. was a real professional doctor. These days, somebody could work us. Really have to learn from doctor. They were very touching and patient. This is very sad. Fetal shall die. Fetal shall die because you have demanded something and the person doesn't have. Then the blood of that person is on you. This has not happened with Dr. C.P. So medical workers must know that when you are in the north here, you are working with very, very poor people. So sometimes you have to give consideration of life first, humanity. Dr. C.P. did his best. He was very humble, very kind, a person of integrity. Our integrity these days is crucial. If we can emulate, if we can remember and then say, "Let me be like Dr. C.P." When Dr. Rupira died, I moved the note in the communities, talking to children and almost every children said, "If I study very hard, I want to be like Dr. Rupira. I want to study and become a doctor." I said, "You have to study hard. You make sure you concentrate." So here are those who are already paid doing the working. I'm not a health personnel. I'm a teacher by profession but I worked also there as a secretary of health. When I go again, I was the secretary of health in Gulu district. And you are people who are kind to their patients and people who are not kind to their patients. Please let us be kind like Dr. C.P. I found when, at least, there was some proposal about upgrading health center threes to health center fours. It's very hard in the city with the land. At least we have four health center three in Badegi Lahebi. In Lahebi area, we want to get upgraded, be put in the upgrading to health center four this time but because of land, this has not been possible. So sometimes when we struggle from up from down also, we should make it easy for that kind of expansion. If a health center has to be upgraded, it means that it has to also have some more land because you are going to have doctors in that health facility. So let us think about land and whenever we talk about land for facilities, especially for community facilities like health center, health center or medical facilities, education facilities, we should be willing, we should be able to make it a little easier, not so difficult for government to access that kind of help. I know that compensation is there and it is by law. That compensation must be there but we should not make it too, too high. This is what I can say about upgrading. We have four health centers that we could upgrade to health center four. The Lahebi, there are Ezeket, Laru and Badegi. We have all these four health center threes in Badegi for upgrading but it is not possible. Well, there was something about Ezeket City SCAR. I think we need to follow it closely because the question of City SCAR came earlier before we even received City SCAR. We were in the front of the city. And people started fundraising. I don't know where the fund that we raised, where the fund, when. If the fund is there, then it's not enough for City SCAR. Then we need to follow it up because there is a pledge by the president, I think, for City SCAR in Lachoo Hospital. We needed, actually, we needed it yesterday. Very many people have to go to Ezeket Bay Hospital for that kind of help. It is very expensive for our people. So the death of Dr. C.P. should make us really start to deliberate and dialogue on the missing gaps, especially in our locality here in the city. I want to thank Gulu City. I cannot thank them enough for giving this because some of us started thinking about it. Are we going to have? I remember discussing it with the mayor here. Mayor, in case Gulu City will not give the opportunity for doctor to be what? To be paid tribute to Gulu City, then you who is in the division, please take it off. And he was ready to take it off. Thank you everybody. Thank you very much. God has given doctor to us. God has given doctor to us and gave doctor us a big blessing. He also wants him back. As a doctor, I always think doctors should not die young. Because Dr. Sipri is still young. When you are sixty seven, you are still very young. You have just started your life. But God wants us back the way he wants, not the way we want. So he has taken me back. So there is nothing we can say, we can just say, rest in eternal peace. I beg to submit.
Honorable Member of Parliament, Gulu City, Honorable Member of Parliament, I wish you had come earlier because all the comment that we made needs some responses. But I believe that in the next council meeting, it will be around. When we are coming this minute. Also we can give you an expert, also take to the Health Ministry, especially on the issue of the city scan. I believe we are the president of the sort of mayor pledge of one billion shillings towards the contribution of the city scan right now. So it will be prudent enough as Member of Parliament of Gulu City to follow it up. We are just making our work is and then secondly on the issue of the health centers. I believe that all these health centers at least want to have space for extension, not for upgrading. And it is a pride, a pride, population of Gulu City is growing there, right? And we cannot just say, and say it's not possible. We are in the face of that, we speak of all of us. And this is the voice of people of Gulu and I pray that it can happen. Honorable members, let's step back here. I don't know if that's, do we have motion that I will be supported? And now I'm ready. Honorable Member, we propose for this near, this roundabout, there is a front of sentinel lamp for which is still under the use of all care of caretaker, the doctor. We have other roundabouts that is still under our control, but we also have others that are on the road of Wundra, which leads right up to the city council. And I believe that we see that it's as the road committee to take this up, those roundabouts, that we can use and place, who name it, the memory of our foreign doctor. I'm saying, I would love to list the proposals again. So what is?
Madam Speaker, most of the proposals of Honorable Grand Rua Asetan and by Honorable Sidi. So unless we had another new rule.
Honorable, how do we help Honorable Susan to come back to the top of the list?
Madam Speaker, I take special recognition of the input of the gallery to the discussion of this council. Noting that some of their recommendations are consultative and collaborative in nature. There was a suggestion of tree planting from Badegelahibi City Division. I pray and also consider that this council fully accepts this proposal of tree planting while acknowledging that it is collaborative with Lachoo Hospital. There was a proposal also from a councillor from Badegelahibi about a learning and a teaching block for Gulu University Teaching Hospital, being named after the late, we were advised by the management of Gulu University that this is still work in progress, considering the bureaucracies at institutional level. I pray that we respect that process and give it the time it needs. Number three, also, Madam Speaker, there was a proposal that a monument be placed in the city and this fully rhymes with the gazetation of a particular roundabout where a number of memories would be easily built. And then lastly, Madam Speaker, there was also a proposal from the dignitaries that a city scan lobbying be kickstarted by Gulu City Council. And we were also further advised by experts that beyond lobbying for a city scan, we should also lobby for the functioning of the city scan. So those were two sister advices that were given. And Madam Speaker, I am up to second that we lobby for a city scan and for also the facilities to ensure that a city scan is made in a good condition that can be able to run in our hospital. I'm up with those secondments, Madam Speaker. Thank you so much.
Honorable Susan?
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, your table remain to honor. I also have to second the motion moved by the gallery. One is about the placing of the monument that my colleague, Honorable Andrew, has talked about. I want to second by admitting that the monument be put at the custom corner, roundabout with consultation with Wundra. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. And then also, a proposal has been made that a dormitory in Mary Immaculate be named after Dr. Sipri. Madam Speaker, I want to inform the House that that dormitory has already been named after Mego Tengina Lamunon, who was the teacher of Van Guard Primary School and was also a member of PAC, Gulu City Council. Madam Speaker, a proposal was also made that a portrait not only be put in the Gulu City Old District Council Hall, but in all the district council hall of Acholi Subregion. We are well aware the speaker has the oral forum through you, Madam Speaker. Please, I second that all the portrait of our dad, friend, brother, Dr. Sipri be sent to all the district council hall. In conclusion, Madam Speaker, allow me also say, I want to thank my mama, the Honorable Member of Parliament of Gulu City, for all her submission. But also I want the audience to know that Dr. Sipri, Sipri and Opira, whom we all call him Dr. Sipri, is a dad, a brother, a friend to all of us here. As Gulu City Council would not fail to give him this moment to pay him the last tribute. It was a debate that the business that went fair of Gulu City Council sat and said impossible. It was supposed to be a joint full council meeting with all the leaders of Acholi Subregion. But we saw it was the time wasn't over yet enough with the consultation from the other district local government through the speaker. I know the speaker will speak about him. And we decided let us give him the last respect as Gulu City Council. But we use our forum for some of the resolutions that are going to be passed here to reach other local governments. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. May the soul of our beloved, loved father, friend, Dr. Sipri, rest in eternal peace till we meet again. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, one proposal for tree planting, I also second it. But the prayer of having a baby boy will not encourage the pharmacologists.
We are closing. Honorable Members, thank you very much for your participation. Now we run this honor to the chancellor to make some commitment. Then we ask the deputy mayor to come.
Honorable Speaker and members of council, allow me observe established protocol. The personalities in here today who have come to pay tribute to the foreign doctor in your respective capacities. I salute you all for taking off time to come and pay tribute to Dr. Sipri. Honorable Speaker, as the implementing arm of council resolutions, I look back with commitment for the proposals made by council in honor of the late Dr. Sipri for implementation. With your, with your office, Honorable Speaker, I pledge to make added follow-up as a demonstration for implementation of the resolutions. Honorable Speaker, I thank you so much for organizing this conversation, which is a well thought out idea in honor of our late doctor. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. My names are Bernard Morot and the Deputy City Clerk. Our city clerk is out of station. I thank you very much.
Why did he say that he is not going to introduce himself? Before he introduce himself, you will allow me invite the deputy mayor to give us the remark from his worship and then my deputy introduce himself.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank you for giving me the shows of his worship the mayor to make the final remarks on behalf of the entire leadership of Gulu City Council. I would like to thank everyone here present who spared his overtime to join us in paying tribute to our brother, the late Dr. Sipri. We also thank all those standing with the family. As council, we thought honoring Dr. Sipri with a special sitting is worthy of his contribution to the citizens of Uganda and more especially the people of Acholi land. I would like all of us here to take back hope in the workable proposals made from both the council members and the members from the gallery in honor of Dr. Sipri. To the bereaved family, Mego Florence, Paulus Son, Lachoo and Attiyak fraternity, please, we urge you to find strength in the biblical teaching, however difficult it may be. Believe me, I do understand. Madam Speaker, it is now that through your honored chair, I would like to take this moment and read a condolence message from his worship, the mayor of Gulu City, who is out of the country on official duty in Cairo. This is a condolence message from his dear sources from the bereaved family of late Dr. Sipri and Opira, friends, relatives and the mourners. Rest condolence message. On behalf of Gulu City leadership and my own behalf, we are deeply saddened by the passing off of Dr. Sipri and Opira, a dedicated radiologist specialist who had worked tirelessly to provide health care to countless individuals in Gulu City, northern Uganda, south Sudan, Diarra Congo and the Greater Lake region. His unwavering commitment to serving the vulnerable communities affected by the corn insurgency exemplified his selflessness and compassion. Dr. Opira's contribution to the field of health care and his impact on the lives of so many will never be forgotten. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his family, colleagues, staff of St. Mary's Hospital, patients and all those who were fortunate enough to have known him. May he, may his legacy continue to inspire others to follow in his footsteps of service and dedication and may his soul rest in eternal peace. Hope Wanga Alfred, Mayor of Gulu City. I thank you all.
Honorable Members and the mourners who are here tonight. Before I introduce myself, I would like to join all of you paying our tribute to a great man that nobody has disputed all that he has done for humanity. We live with people like him. And what bothers me is that we cannot change even when we see what they do. A lot of words and pieces of advice is being said here. How I wish that us who serve humanity in different points, in different areas of our daily lives will emulate the good examples that have been said here. We know that the late CP, Dr. CP is gone. We have got to celebrate his life. We have got to emulate what he has been doing when he was alive. Gulu City Council has had its share already to implement the resolutions that have been brought forward by both honorable members and the members in the gallery. For once, Madam Speaker, our office should take a lead in making sure that what we have discussed here are actually implemented. So that what my colleague, the Honorable Sundia Yee has been talking about is not talked about anymore. Dear mourners, I am the Deputy Speaker of Gulu City Council. I am the mayor workers representative. My name is Akenna Lameks-Lambart.
Conclude and go to the last of the day. Allow me once again, thank each and everybody who has endeavored to be with us today. I also thank the contribution that you have rendered to ensure that we pay the last respect. And I also appreciate all the leaders who have come and who has also given in the proposal awaits implementation. And I also pray that all the doctors that are here, I believe sometime you hear leaders talking bitterly about you while forgetting your contribution. When you make mistake, it becomes a big issue. But when you save life, nobody talks about it. It is a painful moment that right now we are sending off our friend, doctor, of which, as I stated in the morning, that I knew him fifteen years ago. And I have this number, his first name.
and I have his number, his personal number, and I believe Doctor has only one number. And he's not mean sharing information with anyone. So with this, we'll also allow you to equalize the medical fraternity for all the effort that you have put in place. Working with you was a nice experience today. That each and everything that I said was implemented up to dot. Thank you very much. And the whole community. And then also allow me thank the media team for broadcasting this thing online. It's on YouTube. For us who are participating, we will not be watching, but later on you can watch it at your later time. And also thank the family members and friends. I believe this is a difficult moment. And I pray that may Almighty God grant you the wisdom and the strength to mourn our father. My father was once a doctor, Doctor Kela Lea, who is also be late now. So I know what she people goes through. Honorable Members, as we come to the conclusion, before we conclude, I will also request one person from the committee to read us the next program. And when we are going for adjournment, members, I was requested if you are going to view the body. I said no, but I think it's the right time for us to view his body. So immediately after that adjournment, while I'll be laying the wreath, we'll view the body and I'll be marching out. Then other honorable councillors will follow me in that order, they know. And then the public will now join in. So with that, can we hear the, maybe the program from here? That one coming is our chair one, as the service commission.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, the honorable councillors, dear mourners, ladies and gentlemen. Our program after this council session, we shall proceed to the family home in Badegi. From Badegi, Madam Speaker, we had as a committee agreed that we shall allow the mourners and other members in the neighborhood who will join us this afternoon to view the body from home. So that tomorrow, there would be no viewing of the body from the prayer venue. That is what we agreed yesterday as a committee. So after here, we shall all move to the family home where there will also be a short prayer this evening, for about one hour, the priest is here. And then after that, the vigil will continue. And the rest of the family members will spend the night at the family home. The travel arrangement is simple. The way you came here is also the way you are going to go home if you should join us this evening. The route to the family home, for those of you who know Gulu Airfield, you will follow that route to the airfield and then you will take the route right to Oiteen shortly after the home of General Saleh. That is where the family home is. I hope we can all find our way there.